All right, ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you for coming to our special meeting tonight to talk about the Conference Center and public input. At this point in time, I will turn it over to our attorney, Jeremy Comer.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we'll have, according to the agenda, we'll finalize the speaker set, which we'll do right now. There are thirteen people currently on the list to speak. Is there anyone else who would like to speak that's not on the list? Anyone else? Okay. Then that has now been set. After that, we'll have three, once we get to the speakers, we'll have three minutes for each speaker. There will be a clock, and once you have hit your three minutes, we will ask that you finish up at that point. We want to make sure everybody keeps it civil, so no yelling, scream, anything like that, and it should be a good evening. So, thank you.
I don't think my kids are here, so we should be okay there. Before we start tonight's meeting, please join me in prayer. Dear heavenly and gracious Father, we thank you for bringing us here this evening. We ask that you continue to watch over our city. We ask that you watch our state lawmakers as they're in town, and all the great decisions that they can make for our community, and our state, and actually for our country as a whole, in your name we pray, amen. Please join me for the pledge. And I would ask our clerk, Ms. Cindy Latham, Le-Bert, sorry, I always say Latham, I always say that wrong. She's filling in for Phyllis. If she could have roll call, please.
Branch.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Hussey.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Praither.
Here.
Schulte.
Here.
Scrivner.
Here.
All right, thank you. We have a quorum, and everyone's here tonight. I appreciate the council making an extra effort to come here on a special night. We finalized the list. Next thing that we have first is a presentation of the different proposals from the CEO and President of the Jefferson City Area Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Randy Allen. Randy, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good evening. For the record, my name is Randy Allen, 213 Adams Street, and I am, as the mayor said, President and CEO of the Jefferson City Area Chamber of Commerce. I am here this evening to present the best and final offers from the two developers on the Conference Center and Hotel project, and to explain the framework under which they were provided. Just a little background first on the process. Last fall, as you'll remember, two developers responded to the city RFP to design, build, finance, and operate a Conference Center and Hotel in Jefferson City. On November the eighteenth of last year as well, these proposals were considered by the council, and neither was accepted to move forward with a pre-development agreement, in large part due to the lack of details presented by both. Subsequent to that meeting, the mayor and some council members asked if I would use my past experience and knowledge in the design, construction, and finance of large public-private projects to develop a more detailed pro forma template, which could be used by both developers and respond in more detail. This would then allow the council to make a more rational and fact-based decision on moving forward with a development agreement. Working closely with Drew Hilpert, we crafted such a template. That template was provided and explained to both developers, and it was agreed that they would submit their information within thirty days of those meetings. The responses to that are what you have before you tonight. The template was developed with the following key elements in mind. First, the Conference Center building program. The developer was to provide a program of the proposed net building area and a resulting gross building square footage and a cost estimate per square foot for that construction. Hotel building program. The developer was to provide a program of the amount of hotel rooms, the cost per room, and the proposed hotel quality. With regard to parking development, the developer was to provide the number of parking spaces required for the hotel and Conference Center proposal, and to provide the cost estimate to develop either on-grade and/or structured parking. With regard to other building development costs, the developer was to provide an estimate of other costs, including non-parking site development, site acquisition, and, excuse me, miscellaneous costs, including design, project management, and legal fees. The sum of these individual costs were provided as the total project cost. In addition, the developers were asked to provide a twenty-year financing cost for these initial projects. Next, the developers were asked to provide a twenty-year estimate of revenues and expenses on a yearly basis for both the Conference Center and the hotel. This estimate was to include all costs, and, in addition, a reserve for replacement fund. The basis for this portion of the template was derived by the report you received from Charles Johnson and Associates last fall. Next, the developer was asked to provide a twenty-year estimate of the available four percent lodging tax currently being collected for tourism development. And finally, the developer was asked to provide a proposal on other incentives that would be needed to make this project viable. The menu of incentives included all those available to cities for economic development purposes. For example, property tax abatement through Chapter one hundred or Chapter three fifty-three for both the Conference Center and the hotel, which could include up to a hundred percent abatement for the project twenty-year period. Redirected tax incentives through a new or modified TIF plan, a new or modified Community Improvement District sales tax plan, a new Transportation Development District sales tax plan, and finally, any other general revenue or other subsidies required for the twenty-year term of the project. That being the case, let's look at the two proposals that you have before you tonight. And I think there was a handout that I will use for the purpose of the discussion. And so, these were received, and they are summarized as follows. The location of the two projects, first, the Earhart Group chose the location of three hundred West McCarty with additional parking in the block to the east of that, which is known as two eleven West McCarty, or four oh five Broadway. The Farmers chose to be the Conference Center and Hotel to be constructed at the mall, the hotel being adjacent to the mall, and the Conference Center being primarily within the mall. The gross square foot of the Conference Centers proposed forty-four thousand five hundred and eighty-five square feet for the Earhart Project, and sixty-one thousand square feet proposed by the Farmers. The largest single room, or one of the things you're interested in, thirty thousand square foot for the Earhart Proposal, and forty thousand square foot for the Farmer Proposal. With regard to additional breakout space, the Earhart Proposal included breakout space that would be included in the Conference, I mean, I'm sorry, in the Hotel Project itself, and they listed that as two thousand square feet. They also indicated that they would be willing to work with the Capitol Plaza and the state at the Truman Building for additional breakout space. The Farmers indicated that they could provide breakout space, as required, in the mall adjacent to the Conference Center. Regarding the Conference Center cost, the Earhart Proposal included a hundred and fifty rooms, which equaled thirteen million eight hundred thousand dollars. The Farmer Proposal included a hundred and twenty-seven rooms at a cost of just over fourteen million dollars. Let me back up. The Conference Center cost was what I just said. Thirteen point eight million dollars for the Earharts, and just over fourteen for the Farmers. The hotel cost for the Earhart Group was a hundred and fifty rooms, which equaled fifteen million dollars, and for the Farmer Proposal, a hundred and twenty-seven rooms, thirteen million nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Both of the proposers indicated that they would use a plan and concept that was courtyard by the Marriott. With regard to questions about operating loss beyond public participation, both developers indicated that they would be at risk for that additional operating loss. So, with regard to the incentive parts of this, we know that the lodging tax, originally in the RFP, was included at nine billion dollar present value, and there was some estimate that it could be as much as eleven point nine million dollars. Both of those proposers, the city assumed that both of those proposers would be in that range, and that it is what it is. With regard to tax abatements, the Earhart Group proposed the hotel be abated from all property taxes for a twenty-year period, and that value would be about two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars per year. With regard to the Farmer Proposal, the Farmers indicated that they would modify their current TIF plan at the mall to include the Conference Center and the hotel as a part of that TIF plan, and that number was estimated to be about five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars per year for the twenty-three-year life of the TIF. With regard to parking, the Earhart Proposal indicated that they would require a two hundred and fifty space constructed parking garage, probably on the site of the Conference Center, and in addition, would require another four hundred spaces on-grade parking for their project. The value of the parking garage was indicated to be five million dollars, and the value of the on-grade parking construction was valued at one point two million dollars. The Earharts asked that the city provide those two items to the developer as a part of this project. With regard to the Farmer Proposal, they indicated they wanted a seven percent lodging, the seven percent lodging tax, which is the four percent identified for tourism purposes and the additional three cents for the new hotel and Conference Center itself, and this is estimated to be about two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars per year for twenty-three years. In addition, the Earharts asked the city to allow them to create a special Conference Center incentive, which would capture the sales, the one percent sales tax at the Conference Center and Hotel, estimated to be about three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars per year for twenty years. The Farmers asked that the city use their appropriation authority in statute to pledge support of any bond financing that would be included in the TIF and the CID for that. In addition, the Farmers proposed to donate property that they own at one eighteen East High Street for use as a pass-through between a proposed parking garage at the Hawthorne Bank location to High Street. With regard to the appropriation pledge, again, the Farmers have asked that that be included not only in the Conference Center proposal, but also as a part of the original TIF and CID proposal. The effect of that is to be able to lower the interest rate on the development. Thank you very much for the opportunity to let me assist you with this project in my role as your Economic Development Advisor. I am not by any means an expert on the operation of a Conference Center, nor hotel, nor do I pretend to speak for the Convention and Visitors Bureau with regard to the necessity for this project and its effect on tourism for our community. However, the chamber has for a long time advocated, on behalf of the need, to expand opportunities for conventions and meetings in Jefferson City. We continue to believe that that would have a very positive impact on our community. As our elected officials, you must weigh these considerations, along with the cost and viability of these projects. Thank you very much for allowing me to present this tonight.
Thank you, Randy, appreciate it. Next on our agenda, looks like we're at public comment. Diane, do you have anything to add? All right, thank you. Next, we'll move into public comment, and it looks like we have thirteen people signed up here. We'll start just from one to thirteen. As Jeremy had mentioned earlier, please limit your remarks to three minutes, and for the record, please give us your name and address, please. First, I have, is it James Olson or Maggie Olson, or both? I'm guessing. Oh, okay. Oh, well, I hope everything's okay.
Well, we have to. I'm here to present his statement on his behalf.
All right, well, thank you for being here, Ms. Olson.
Councilmembers, Mayor. We live, my husband Jim Olson, myself Maggie Olson, we live at four oh four Oak Valley Court in Jefferson City, zip code six five one zero nine. And as Jim writes, "I am retired as Chief of Operations, my position from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and five at the City of San Jose, California Convention Center. I worked there from eighty-nine until oh five, involved in all physical operations at the Convention Center and the Center for Performing Arts. During this time, I traveled extensively to other Conference Centers to evaluate the needs of events scheduled to come to our venue. This gave me the opportunity to confer with management of successful Conference Centers in many cities, large and small: Boise, Birmingham, San Diego, Seattle, Portland, Las Vegas, Boston, London in the U.K., Reno, San Francisco, Raleigh, North Carolina, and Midland, Odessa, Texas. Qualified by my experience, I speak tonight in strong favor of locating the proposed Conference Center in our downtown for the following reasons. In the cities I just mentioned, all the Conference Centers were located in the downtown area. I observed attendees walking easily to restaurants, taverns, parks, and local shops during their lunch or evening free time. I mentioned in particular a trip to Birmingham in nineteen ninety-eight to investigate a traveling Smithsonian museum event. Concurrent with the century event was an annual downtown music festival in the streets, just like we have in Jeff City during the summertime. People were able to enjoy the museum displays, as well as the music, food, and general festivities of the downtown area. I was involved in numerous planning meetings for the Convention Center. Competition always exists between venues. Potential clients always have choices, and will make their selection based on total quality of experience available to them. Therefore, the operative concept persistently was, how can we enhance the perception statewide and regionally of our Conference Center as a destination site? How to make our city a go-to place? What do we need to do and have readily available to attendees for their enjoyment and entertainment? Suburban areas were never considered for any off-site events. I conclude my remarks with the words of Convention Center Director James McBride and Director of Marketing, Marit Hanson, when I met with them recently during a consultation. I discussed with them your efforts to decide between a downtown or suburban location for a financially and culturally successful Conference Center. Their response to me, "Are you kidding? That's a no-brainer. Not locating a Conference Center in the heart of downtown, it's a setup for failure." Thank you for your time and attention.
Ms. Olson, thank you for being here tonight. Next, I have Mr. Glenn Castalis. Welcome back, Glenn.
My name is Glenn Castalis, nineteen oh four Veth. Why aren't the two proposals on the city's website rather than one, than a one-page comparison? Both proposals, in their entirety, should be made available to the citizens. Why are you providing the citizens only one opportunity to voice their opinion? Several town hall meetings should be held in each ward on weeknights and weekends to ensure you receive adequate input from the citizens, your bosses. I believe you do not want to hold town hall meetings or reveal the proposals in their entirety, because you do not want to hear what the citizens may say. During my door-to-door campaign, I received input from about three hundred households on the Conference Center. Only twenty-six households were in favor of a Conference Center. That means ninety-one percent are against a Conference Center. I am sure if you got out and listened to the people you are supposed to represent, especially the citizens that you do not know, you would probably get similar results. Do you realize, or even care, that building another hotel will cause financial harm to the existing hotel industry? A reduction of a dollar twenty-five of RevPAR, which is revenue per available room per night, will have severe negative consequences. Such a small daily reduction in revenue over the course of a year would result in the loss of income as follows: Days Inn, in excess of twenty-two thousand dollars; Holiday Inn Express, almost thirty-two thousand dollars; Best Western, a little over thirty-four thousand dollars; Oak Tree Inn, a little over thirty-five thousand dollars loss; and Fairfield Inn, a little over thirty-eight thousand dollar loss. And remember, the ballot language read, "For Promotion of Tourism." Vote no on these two proposals. Thank you.
Glenn, thank you. Next, I have on the list, Mr. David Wallace. Dave, welcome back, sir.
Thanks, sir. City Council, Mayor, thank you very much for allowing me back once again. David Wallace, twenty-eight twelve Sioux Drive, six five one oh nine. This evening, I'm going to take a little different approach to both of these concepts, and one that's, I'm finding, is kind of a, I don't know, critical to the success of either, and that's a very simple thing of parking. You know, we've been told that there's three thousand parking spots out at the mall. Well, there are, but if you go out and take a look at it, along the south side of Capitol Mall, running from Sears down to and around the corner of Dillard's, you have a total of seven hundred and seventy-seven parking spots, okay? Capitol Plaza has three hundred and sixty on-site, where they have the ability to utilize some of the state lots and adjacent to their facility. When they have a banquet for nine hundred people, they fill their facility, they fill the lots across the streets. If you go to the Capitol Mall and you take a banquet out there, say the Vitae, if they put fifteen hundred people in there, two thousand, if they've got a speaker that really draws, you're going to talk a thousand vehicles. Any business that's out at the mall will suffer because of the success of the Convention Center itself. For those of us that were around when the Capitol Plaza first opened, we had Carnegie Specialty Restaurant, we had Cordial's Night Club, and those things were very popular going entities. But as the success of the hotel grew, it restricted the availability of parking for local guests to go and enjoy it. And I'm afraid that the same thing may happen at Capitol Mall. Our success will pose a burden on some of the existing businesses out there. Think about it. I'm not exactly sure how the restriction, or how many parking spots the hotel itself will take up, but if you put seven hundred cars out there, that's going to stretch, again, from Sears all the way down to Dillard's. What's going to happen to the business traffic at Pizza Hut, there at the Fuji's Restaurant? And it will even impact Dillard's if they're wrapped all the way around that corner, because people are going to park as close to the facility as possible. So I see a real potential problem there. The other thing is, with the downtown location, when we first started talking about the Convention Center project, the city was involved in saying that they would provide a parking garage, all right? I know right now it's being discussed about building another parking garage downtown, which, from the figures I got from the city, it would be a pretty much a foolish endeavor, because the parking garage we have on Capitol and Madison is only at peak capacity January through May, ten a.m. to one p.m. To me, that doesn't warrant a new facility there, but if you put it down adjacent to the Convention Center, you've got the possibility of deriving some additional revenues in this city. So, that's my two cents worth.
Dave, thank you, sir. I remember you back from the Capitol Plaza days, like a few of us do. Next, I have Joe Bednar. Okay. Next, I have Scott Earhart.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I am one of the developers, Earhart Group, and I reside in Hannibal, Missouri. I do want to point out that our project is a viable project. We presented numbers that show that the project is a very robust project. From a developing side point, you know, we specialize in hotels and lodging. We're in this industry, and we're in it long-term. We've operated numerous facilities, and we continue to operate them, and we do it in a fashion that everybody is appreciative of, and we also, it's, when it comes to building these things out, we know how to build these things out. We've done it over twenty-five times, and so, I would just ask you guys to trust us and take that next step into that pre-development agreement, and allow it to get in there and explore the possibilities. Obviously, we've outlined in broad categories where our financing and where the monies will come from, and when you get to that pre-development agreement, then there's opportunity to really fine-tune things and for everybody to get more comfortable. If the numbers don't work at that point, I guess it's an opportunity for both sides to walk away and say, hey, we really tried, but I really encourage you guys to take the next step with us, with our group, and to explore the possibilities of making this happen. This is a project that Jeff City has wanted and explored for many, many years. I don't believe we, the city has ever gotten to this point, and to, if you would happen to walk away from this at this point in time, I feel like it would be a mistake. So, I really encourage the council to take that leap of faith and commit to a pre-development agreement with us. It's, we're a group that, we're not fly-by-nighters. We've been in this business for a long time, and we can, we're going to continue to be in this business for the next twenty, thirty, forty years. If you do the deal with us, you'll be talking to me in twenty, thirty years from now, and we will run this project right, and we will make sure that this is a successful project, because that's what we do. It's our project to make it happen, and you can have one point of contact to talk to and vent about the facility and to make sure that it happens right. So, if you see it in your heart to give us that chance and get into that pre-development agreement, I'd sure appreciate it. So, thank you for your time.
Next, I have Charles, is it Zetnik?
I'm going to pass.
Okay. Do you want to go later, sir?
No, thank you.
Next, I have Jerry Nohmeyer. Good evening, Jerry.
Good evening. Jerry Nohmeyer, fifteen fifteen East Miller. I object to taxpayer dollars being used to supplement private business. Aside from that, neither of these proposals are in the taxpayers' best interests, and I would like to remind you of your citizen's survey of two thousand and ten, that had less than thirty percent of the respondents that had any interest at all in a Convention Center, and that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Jerry, thank you. Next, I have Ms. Stephanie Bell.
Hello, Stephanie Bell, one three six Riverwood. I'm glad to be with you again this evening, and you've heard a lot from me on our downtown support of a downtown Conference Center, and I just have a couple of points to go over this evening, new points. So first, there are some rumors circulating about what the lodging tax money could be used for if both proposals were rejected. And while it is technically true, I think that it's been talked about tonight, that the money is to be used for tourism, the voters were sold on a lodging tax for a specific purpose, and that specific purpose is a conference center. And you'll be getting a handout, and those are all the news articles, all the press pieces that went out to the voters in support of the lodging tax. And as you'll note, each one, I think there are more than ten, referenced the money would be used for a conference center. So I would just like to remind the council of that. I do imagine that there will be significant opposition to use the funds for anything else other than a conference center, since that's how it was put to voters. Second, I have heard the suggestion that some feel like both proposals might require too much public participation, which I think is how it's worded on the handout for incentives. Um, and, and with respect to those incentives, above and beyond the lodging tax, I believe the summary from the city indicates the incentives would be in the, for both proposals would be in the range of eleven to fifteen million dollars. And for some, some of the feedback I've heard is that's just too much, uh, too much incentives. And so, this same council, just a few months ago, approved more than thirty-five million dollars in total incentives, net present value fifteen-point-seven million dollars in incentives, for a project that was never approved by the voters or identified in a two-year, community-wide process as one of the top thirty projects to move this community forward. So when you compare those incentives to these incentives, I'd really ask you to look at what's already been improved incentive-wise and know that the voters approved this project, told you this is what they wanted. Third, I've also heard a lot of people claim that the numbers just won't work, and I'm not a real estate developer or a hotel operator, so I can't really comment on the economic feasibility of the proposals, but I do know that you have experts in the developers. You've heard from one tonight, and they have experience in these types of projects. So, um, not only have they told you that they want the project to work, they told you it will work, but they've also told you that they're going to bear any operating loss above and beyond the incentives requested. Finally, most importantly, I want to just reiterate that the community's core is the right place for a conference center. Since I spoke to you last, you've seen the addition of a Chinese restaurant and announcements about a new urgent care clinic, a new clothing store, an addition of a fresh market, and a grocery, and grocery offerings in downtown. We've also announced the addition of a farmer's market, three art strolls, and three additional Thursday night lives. The people of Jefferson City are speaking to you every day through their investment of resources and time in our beautiful downtown. Keeping a strong core is essential to our economy, and that's why a project like this belongs in downtown. And then I'd just like to say, if you're here in support of the downtown site, if you would please stand, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Uh, next, we have William, is it Steinmeier?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Steinmeier.
William, welcome. Thank you for being here.
And my carefully-prepared five minutes of comments are obviously not going to work, but Mr. Mayor...
Would you like five?
I'm sorry.
If you have, if you have five minutes worth of comments, does anyone mind? You have five. Can we reset the clock, please?
Thank you.
You got it.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, members of the council, my name is Bill Steinmeier. My wife, Becky, and I live at twenty-thirty-one Tower Drive in the fourth ward. Most of you do not know me, but I am not a person who is just against everything. In fact, I voted in favor of the transformation tax and have been enthusiastic about the idea of a convention center or conference center for many years. However, it is my deeply-held opinion that the city of Jefferson would be better off with no convention or conference center than one located at the Capitol Mall. This opinion is based on years of experience attending, planning, and hosting conventions, conferences, seminars, and other meetings of people in my field and related fields. I wrote about this in a letter to the editor last July, and I have brought copies of that letter for your reference. What makes a conference or convention memorable and worthwhile for families as well as attendees is having places of interest that can be visited within walking distance of the convention or conference hotel. In my opinion, it would be a terrible misuse of tax monies collected for tourism to sponsor a Jefferson City convention or conference hotel that is not located downtown, within walking distance of the Capitol Building and its grounds and monuments and memorials, the governor's mansion and the governor's garden, the Supreme Court Building, the Historical Society, the old prison, unique eateries and fine dining, and the Missouri River. I do not know if city officials or consultants have systematically polled the heads of government agencies and trade associations or not, but they need to do so. There are many of each here in Jefferson City. I have previously written to city officials about this, but haven't received a response to date. I will provide you with a copy of my December two thousand and thirteen letter on that subject, and I ask you to read it. Would these government officials and association directors bring their meetings to a Jefferson City conference or convention center? At which location? And how often? Every year? Every two years? Every three years? Would they take their meetings, or take their families to meetings, to another city where a meeting location was at a shopping mall rather than downtown? I personally know city managers in other cities, generally smaller than Jefferson City, who regret that their cities built public swimming pools or recreation centers that have not been self-sustaining and have become drains on their city budgets. We must avoid building a conference or convention center that may not be self-sustaining and becomes a financial albatross around the city's neck. Several letters to the editor in recent days have raised similar concerns. I commend them to the council for your consideration. The farmers are a fine family and wonderful contributors to the economic and civic life of Jefferson City. I wish them nothing but success. That is not the issue here. The mall location is just wrong for the purpose of a convention or conference center. Jefferson City would be better off to have no convention or conference centers than to invest in building one at a shopping mall west of town. Thank you very much for your time and for your service to our city.
You must have speeded it up a little bit.
Had I do.
William, thank you very much for being here tonight. Uh, next, we have Mel Cal...
Calal. Thanks for coming, sir. I live at two-twenty-nine Frederick's Lane on the east side. I'm a new resident since July. My wife needs one of these, I can see, because I tend to get a little windy, but I'll try to do my best tonight. We moved here in July, and at the time, the next ninety days, I saw all the information in the paper about the two proposals. And I'll have to confess, initially, I sort of liked the mall, but I didn't really know much about it. So I've kind of studied it off and on for the last six months. And now I'm leaning to downtown, but neither proposal comes close to being ideal. Either proposal is going to require a whole lot of give and take and some more thought because I haven't seen enough detail yet that, that they're ready to go forward. I'm not saying we should stop. I think we need it. I believe it's a good idea. And, uh, even though I'm pretty conservative, it breaks even, I'm satisfied because it's an attraction for the city. Okay. I'm concerned about, as was raised earlier, the parking limits at the Capitol Mall. I think that's a serious potential problem. You'll get even four or five hundred cars there, and you're going to overwhelm what's available. Secondly, there's no breakout area at the mall, and I have some, some problems about that. It's important that conventions have the flexibility in the facility, and I've been to several of them all over this country where they've got breakout areas easily set up. Downtown, unknown cost of developing the parking downtown. And I spent a few minutes with Drew this morning because I really had some, some ignorance about it. I'd like to see downtown with a scuffle, a couple of skyways. We are wet enough and cold enough with enough people down here for several months a year that it would be nice if we had a parking facility that could serve the proposed convention center and would hook up, for example, across to Truman with an exit to the street. That eliminates some weather problems, and somehow I want to have this parking facility serve other parts of downtown. Not sure if it's possible, but that's what I'd like to see. That, that, I like skyways. I think, I think we're a candidate for that. And the final thing, start preaching. Uh, earlier, Madeline at the News Tribune, I don't know her, but I sent her some information, and they started putting some spreadsheets and so forth. And I like graphics and pictures. It's much easier for pictures to follow than graphics. But I'm very, I'm going to preach for a moment. It's important that, as a council, the clarity be put so the public understands the TIF and the CID and all the rest of these things. I don't catch that it's, there's, the public doesn't understand that. And it's important that you put that in the press or somewhere so that they see that. You can use bar graphs, and in, in particular, you need the type of assessment or tax. You need how much is generated and for what period of time, and when will it end? And that, that's basically my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for being here. We appreciate it, Mel. Uh, next, I have on the agenda, former councilman, Mr. Jim Penfold. Jim, welcome back, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jim Penfold. My wife and I reside at nineteen-oh-one North Circle Drive. Uh, we've been residents of the city for about thirty-five years, so I am not yet quite a native. Jefferson City is the state capital. It's the seat of Missouri government. Stating that is kind of stating the obvious, but I think it's important to keep that in mind when you think of the image that people statewide have of Jefferson City. They're thinking of the state government, state Capitol buildings, activities of the legislature, Supreme Court, the state agencies, and so on. That is a key concept. You get around the state, they talk about Jefferson City, they're really talking about state government. And it's not a bad image for the city, and it's not, it's a good one. It is, we need to sit there, we need to keep it in mind. It is particularly good when you're focusing on bringing outsiders to Jefferson City for the purpose of tourism, business travel, and related meetings, conferences, and exhibitions, and so on. When your purpose is to bring people to your city, kind of focus and key on the major image of your city. And the major image of our city is the state Capitol buildings, the downtown, the historic areas in downtown and surrounding areas. Therefore, I am recommending that the conference center be built in a downtown location, the West McCarty and Broadway location. This location is most convenient and proximate to the main attraction and the main customer, and that is state government. And it's the location that will bring more and more people into the historic city core who will patronize our shops, restaurants, bars, and other attractions. It is also building on strengths and supporting other things. Building a conference center in the downtown location will enhance the redevelopment of the old Saint Mary's Health Center site. It will enhance other activities that are going on in the Wears Creek bottoms and so on. I'd encourage you to look at these projects, look at them very critically, but I'm asking you to remember that the benefit to the city will be enhanced and will be, the long-term benefit of the city will be better if we put that in a downtown location. Thank you.
Jim, thank you. Thanks for your service in the past on this particular project. Uh, next, I have Mr. Leonard Steiman. Leonard.
Leonard Steiman, one-ten North Lincoln, Jefferson City, Missouri. I'm not a lifetime resident here, but I was born in Jefferson City, and I've been all over the country. Me and my wife have been in many, many conferences with the disabled American veterans. By going to these national conferences, I get to learn what, what it's like to be in a situation. Denver, as far as I'm concerned, was the best situation I have ever been in in a conference facility. Jefferson City has taken it on its own to stop rolling up the asphalt at six o'clock in the evening like it was when I was a child in this town. We have our downtown parties downtown. I call them parties because everybody communicates with each other. We've never really had any problems in the last couple of years we've had them. Our downtown is a very beautiful downtown. I moved back here because our location is one of the best in the country. I get to look at a Missouri River, very, the most important river in the country. It was our thriving lifestyle. It was better than the Mississippi River. This was Louisiana Purchase, the start of the Louisiana Purchase. This is the state capital, and we did take it away from Saint Charles, which took it away from Saint Genevieve, and we still have it here. What I really hate is when I'm on a CB in my tractor and trailer, what is wrong with Jefferson City? I go through there, and it's, this expressway, there's three and a half blocks of nothing but blight. Blight. That's like Detroit. You ever been a six-mile Detroit? That's blight. We need to get that cleaned up before we have real blight in that neighborhood. And the only way we're going to do it is put our foot down, build the conference center or build something there so it doesn't look so disgraceful because it is a disgrace to go down Rexwood in the expressway and see the blight that's there. It's been there for too long, and it needs to be cleaned up. And we're smart enough that we have a purveyor, started a trolley system. One of the best things we ever did to this community was have a trolley system. People in the springtime, summertime ride that trolley like it's supposed to be. If you've ever been downtown Denver, they have a trolley system there. They don't charge anything for their trolleys. You get on a trolley, you go down sixteen blocks, one way or the other, and there's restaurants from one end to the other, and they're always busy, and they're always got a conference going on. All I care about, about our purveyors that's going to build this is if they have the decency to use that facility seven days a week, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year for everything. Thank you.
Leonard, thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, next, I have Mr. Don Trabu. Got it. The third time's the charm, right?
I knew you'd make it.
All over, all over town. Don, welcome back, sir.
Uh, Don Trabu, forty-seven-ten Denise Drive. Conference center, best location, definitely downtown. The mall is several miles away from most potential overflow hotels. Downtown, within walking distance of several overflow hotels. The mall is miles away from most state offices. Downtown is within walking distance of most state offices that could utilize a conference center. The mall is miles away from historic sites in Jefferson City. Downtown is within walking distance of the Capitol, Governor's Mansion, Missouri Historic Museum, and yes, even the historic prison site. The mall, all the parking is going to be in the open, right out in the weather. Downtown, we're going to have to build a parking garage. That is great. Take advantage of building that parking garage. You have to raise the ground above the floodplain. Put two or three levels of parking garage underneath the conference center, underneath the hotel. Take advantage of it. It's all protected from the weather. Yes, it's more expensive. However, it provides much-needed downtown parking. A win-win situation. The mall, major highway access is very, very limited, only one diamond interchange. You try to go out there at five o'clock in the evening and get off just with the traffic we had. What's it going to be if we had happened to have a conference out there? You're not going to be able to get there in a timely fashion. Downtown has several access points to Highway fifty, Highway fifty-four, Highway sixty-three. They don't depend on one way to get in and out. The mall, the operators have no experience in operating such an adventure. Yes, they can hire people. With Earhart Group downtown, they do it as a, make a living. They have done it in several locations. They know how it is done. That is a definite plus. They've done it in the past, they're going to be here tomorrow for us. done it in the past. They're gonna be here tomorrow for us. A conference center at the mall location would be built to enhance the mall. A conference center in downtown Jefferson City would be built to enhance Jefferson City. The downtown location is most definitely the best location for a conference center. It's time for Jefferson City to move forward at a downtown location in a very, very positive manner. Thank you.
Don, thank you. Last here on our list this evening, I have Mr. Joe Bednar. Joe, welcome back, sir.
Good to be back. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for hearing everyone today and having a public hearing on this very important measure. I'm Joe Bednar, thirty-four, thirty-four Hobbs Lane with my wife Jill, who lives there and owns a business downtown for twelve years now. So a big investor, and I gotta say, if it wasn't for her, I wouldn't be here. If it wasn't for your downtown, I wouldn't be here. It was when we dated and I saw your downtown that I said, I could live here. And I moved here in nineteen ninety-two as a member of a law, local law firm. Since then, I've worked for two other law firms and partners in two other law firms that located offices here in Jefferson City. One whose office is on Truman Boulevard, fine location, but not downtown. My current law firm, Spencer Fain Britton Brown, is downtown. And we made a commitment to downtown because it offers a vitality and a vibrancy that other communities in the state are dying for. We have state programs, Main Street program. It's about revitalizing your downtown. We've had community organizations, Stephanie. Has anybody done more for downtown from a volunteer perspective, from a research perspective, to try to communicate to this council how important downtown is to the vitality? Everybody that took time out today to come tonight is about a commitment to downtown and a commitment to the economy, a commitment to you, to be your partner. And that's what the Earhart Group is here about. We want to be your partner. You sent out a request for a partnership. And that's what we're about. Developing a partnership in which we don't dictate. We build consensus. We explore what your needs are, and we find the best alignment of interests to solve those needs. I've heard people say, oh, the numbers don't work. No, the numbers do work, but it takes a commitment. It takes agreement. And it takes further exploration. That's why when Scott asked about and requested that we execute a pre-development agreement, that's really the next step. It is like an engagement. Doesn't guarantee you have to marry us, but there's a commitment not only to us, but it's a commitment to the community. It's a commitment to other potential partners that you are gonna do all you can with this partner to make this a success. And if it doesn't work out, no one will doubt that we didn't try everything, that we didn't explore every option. We talked about it. I heard one of the gentlemen talk about, what's the CID, what's the TDD? Hey, I understand that question because even when I was in the governor's office as the old council, the first time I saw an economic development bill, I had to go back to school, figure out all the acronyms. CID is a community improvement district. A TDD is a transportation development district. We don't impose those. The people vote for those. The people who will be taxed have to vote to approve those. So it's not dictating anything. It's not asking for a handout. It's a partnership. Do we all agree that this is important? So we'd like to execute a pre-development agreement to explore other partnerships with the state, with the county, with the school district, with Lincoln University, the jewel of this community, an economic engine that's underrated, to build upon all of the good things that can happen. And the Earharts have been here now for years at the altar, ready to go forward. We ask you, as Scott said, we've built, we've shared a lot of information. We've shared a lot of trust here. We think we can be successful. And the vote, all, the only vote we're asking for right now is a vote to proceed with a pre-development agreement so we can explore these future partnerships and confirm with you all the confidence in our numbers that you've seen in our spreadsheets. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Next, that finishes our public hearing part tonight. Next, we'll move into number six, council discussion on conference center proposals. Bob?
What I would really appreciate, if we could take a little time and do it, one, one of the things I was hoping that we would hear tonight from the people who spoke was their evaluation of the proposals from a financial perspective. I think, I think we probably have heard from most everyone that spoke tonight before and, and was aware of their preference in terms of where they would like the, like it located. But I guess what I really would like to understand is whether or not people are comfortable with the, I know we did have, have one speaker indicate comfort with the incentives. But if we could ask Mr. Allen to come back up again, and actually, as one speaker indicated, he would like to know more about how these incentives work and how the, the funding is generated. I think we need more detail in terms of where the money, one speaker spoke, that was about eleven million or to fifteen million dollars. I'd, I'd be very interested in having Mr. Allen explain how that eleven to fifteen million dollars would be generated and where it would come from and, and for how long it would, uh, would take to generate that. I, I think that's the missing link as far as the public is concerned. I think a lot of people would like to get that information. I don't know if the rest of the council would agree that we need that, but I was hoping that that would be, what this meeting would actually do would be to explain in more detail how those incentives are gonna work.
Bob, if I'm understanding correctly, I think what you're looking for is, is more clarification on kind of the bottom part.
Exactly. The part below the solid line. I, I'd like, I'd like for, explain, for instance, what it would take to, for the-
Randy, I tell you what, are you good to go?
Sure. You have me too. I'll be up there.
Right. Well, i- if you would, Randy, why don't you come forward and, and just explain to us? I mean, we know, we've obviously seen these, but please explain to the public and the viewing public, each proposal, kind of top to bottom, from the bottom section down. And you can use as, as, as layman as terms as you would like.
Well, I think as, as Joe Bednar pointed out, this is, uh, this is never an easy thing and it is complicated, just because the way the statutes are written and, and the way you have to do business. But Bob, do you have any specific, like, why don't you just start out with any specific questions you might have?
If, if the council won't mind, I'll just ask you the questions that I feel would, should be, information should, should be revealed. And no particular order, but one of the issues here is a SLCCI, which is basically a, an incentive that is about three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. What, what would be required to create that incentive and, and to cover it? How, how is that gonna work?
Well, the way I understand it, and I'm, I'm, until this project, I'm not familiar with that term at all. But the way I understand it is it would simply be an agreement between the developer and the city council to allocate that sales tax through a general revenue appropriation. So there is, I don't believe there's any implementation way in the law to do this in terms of just, you know, this is, I think that was just a term of art that is created so that you could directly appropriate that one percent because that one percent can't be captured because it's an exempt from the, you know, from the statute on some of these other things. So that one percent cannot be captured any other way, and so it would have to be done through a, through a general revenue appropriation.
So in, in other words, each year, the council, as part of its budgeting process, would budget three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Now, the proposals footnotes and, and in one of our closed sessions, there was discussion about that particular incentive and indicated that that could be, that the council could enact a TIF and a, perhaps a CID and perhaps a TDD in order to generate that revenue so there wouldn't be a burden to the, to the budget. And I believe you, I believe Mr. Hilpert and yourself did some evaluation to determine how large that area would need to be in order to generate three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. How large a TIF area would that require?
Yeah, let me, let me clarify one thing. The three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, I believe, is the total amount, including a TDD and including a CID, which would be put in place. And-
And Randy, Bill Betts has joined you right here also.
Bill's worked pretty hard on those numbers, I know.
By the way, Drew was at home and he texted me. I don't wanna do anything against the sunshine law and said, hey, you might wanna call on Bill. So Bill, I appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you very much.
Randy's correct in what he was saying there. The SLCCI, what that entails is a one percent TDD, a one percent CID, and then there's an additional, what we, just a, a sales tax, another one percent that you'd put on the conference center and the hotel is what those, what that would, the SLCCI would encapsulate. Now, based on the numbers that we have and that we've ran, the, the TDD would be on the Capital Plaza Hotel, the new hotel, and then the conference center. The CID obviously would include the new hotel and the conference center, but it might also include other areas such as the Capital Plaza Hotel or a larger area. From my analysis on this, it would take probably a good portion of the downtown in order to get to us to the three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars that we need for that CID. So you'd be looking, we've looked at different ones and done rough estimates of it. And again, it's, they're rough, but you're talking probably something from Bolivar to Jackson and then from the river down to the highway would be the area that would have to have a CID put on that in order for us to get a comfortable number where we would say we wouldn't need a general fund appropriation each year in order to cover that three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. You could look at a CID a different direction and go down Missouri Boulevard and get down to Schnucks and in that area. Again, but you'd have to encapsulate a lot of businesses along that route in order to find an area that's comfortable enough to not need a general fund appropriation to meet those needs. So I hope that answered the question.
And the, the mechanics of doing that, what, what's involved in creating this CID? How, I mean, it's not just something that the council can necessarily just impose by law. How, how, what's the mechanism?
In order to do the CID, we first have to, I mean, there's a lot of things that go into it to figuring out what the right area is, but let's say the right area is Bolivar to Jackson from the river down to the highway, that square area there. Then the first thing that has to happen is the landowners or the business owners have to vote to impose the CID and we'd have to have a majority vote there. So fifty point one percent covers the majority, but that still doesn't, it, make the CID become a reality. Then the CID comes to the council and the council has to make a decision whether or not to impose the CID. Now, if you got a hundred percent approval, that's a different story, but if you, if you got a sixty, forty vote, then you're gonna have forty percent of the folks wanting to talk to you about imposing that, that type of a CID. So to make it the easiest way, that's it. It requires a vote of the landowners first, you need fifty point one percent, and then from there, it requires a vote of the council.
Okay. So, and, and without a, a CID and these other incentives to cover that expense, then it would just be coming directly out of general revenues and would be competing with whatever other things are funded by general revenue, the fire department, the police department, the IT department, and all, all the other departments in the city. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The, and, and not to, to appear to be picking on one proposal over the other. The other proposal requires that we modify the, the current TIF and, and change to, from a fifty percent TIF to a seventy-five percent TIF on the mall. Would you explain the mechanics of, of that?
I got it. Really perfect. I will take that. Basically, I mean, everybody, I think everyone on the council, but for everyone at home, a TIF is, we set, we have a ceiling right now of what the, the Capitol Mall generates. When the council enacted the new TIF, basically any new revenues that come into, to the TIF there, whether they're sales tax, property tax, those types of things, they split with the city and the developer. So the developer gets fifty percent, the city gets fifty percent. If we went to doing the seventy-five percent, that's a decision just for the council. The council could do that on their own. But what would happen is instead of us getting a fifty-fifty split, the developer would get seventy-five percent and the city would only get twenty-five percent of those new revenue streams.
Now, one difference that the mechanics of, of doing a TIF at the mall, one thing that makes it easier for that developer to do is the fact they have that same requirement for a TIF, a CID, and so forth of, of a majority of the landowners voting, but the mall is pretty much owned by one landowner. And so that vote is much easier to have occur than a vote for the downtown site where, rather than the developer going out and selling these business owners on the idea of, of imposing a tax on themselves to finance this, it is being left to the council to go out and convince these business owners and solicit them for this tax. Is, is that correct?
I think for the most part, that's correct. I mean, if, because we're, the only thing that the farmers were asking for is, is a TIF. They didn't want an additional CID. So there's, the discussion really there is for the, to have a discussion with the developer. For the, for the Earhart Group and their proposal, it would be up to the city. Now, I'm sure the Earharts would certainly be willing to assist us in trying to get the landowners to participate in the CID. So, but it's, it's kind of, we are kind of on the hook there to, to make that work. Or if we went that far to the agreement and if we couldn't make it work, obviously, that's a time when the council could then say, we're no longer interested and, and bow out gracefully. So there, there is that.
There's been a lot of conversation about parking and about the concerns that there's not enough parking at the mall. The parking garage that we've, at this proposal includes is a two hundred and fifty space garage. And that two hundred and fifty space garage would cost five million dollars. Is that correct? And we would also provide grade parking across from the convention center at the two-eleven West McCarty site. And the cost for improving that would be about one point two million.
That's correct.
And we would, we would end up giving sixty free spaces, I believe, to the state to acquire that property as well.
Correct.
What would this do? How, how would we finance that garage?
That's a tougher question there. Give me just a second. Basically, we have three point five million in our, in our fund balance for the parking department. So the initial, the initial cost of it, we would, three point five million, we'd put straight to it. We'd put the cash straight to it. So we would have to bond from there going forward. The, we'd have to bond the remainder. So we're looking at six point two million, and we have three point five million to, that we have in cash. So we'd have to bond the remainder. And there's a few other little details in there, but in a sense, what it comes down to is our parking fund today generates roughly three hundred thousand dollars. Revenue exceeds expenses every year. If we were to go out and do the bonding capacity for what we would need to settle up with the state to get the health lab site and to settle up with housing authority, to get the housing authority site, the difference between our, what we, what we make revenue over expenses versus what it would take bonding capacity today is pretty well a wash. I mean, there's a few dollars one way or the other there. And there is some thought that we could do some metered parking or something like that, maybe on the housing authority lot when it wasn't being used by the conference center, some of those things to help generate a little extra revenue. But in a sense, it would basically wipe out all of the fund balance for the, for the parking fund. And then from there, any major repairs and those types of things, we may not have the, any money to do those types of things because we would have given up all of our fund balance and we're, to pay off our bond payments, we're basically spending that money. So it's three hundred thousand dollars come in, three hundred thousand dollars is gonna go out to offset the debt there. So there's nothing we can save for an additional downtown parking garage until after- So, there's nothing we can save for an additional downtown parking garage until after we're done paying off that parking.
Those bonds would be 20-year bonds, so essentially, for the next 20 years, Jefferson City wouldn't be able to build any additional parking or even maintain parking. I, I guess we can maintain it because you're, you're talking about excess, so the assumption is that we, we've been spending money to maintain, but anything that was really major, that you needed a, a major expenditure, you wouldn't have revenues to do that.
That's our thought initially.
Without raising the cost of parking.
Correct. That's the other option is you could raise.
You could raise, you could raise the cost of parking to do that. Okay, let me see if there was another. Now, both, both proposals do indicate that anything over and above the incentives they're asking for, they will be responsible for, but that, I, I'm still, I mean, I have problems with the idea of the 327,000 because that, that really comes as close to being a general obligation as you can get. And I, I think that I personally have made a commitment that, that we wouldn't do that. I, I don't have a big problem with, with incentives that come from growth, and whereas the developer takes responsibility for anything that, if, if the growth's not there, the developer takes responsibility for it. I, I think I'm okay with that, but I, I think everything else is pretty well explained. And if anyone has any questions about the TIF or the CID or, or how the funding can be generated, they certainly can get in touch with us over the course of the week, but maybe someone else has questions for you.
Actually, you're going to come to the front, sir, because we can't hear you from the back. Joe had his hand up a time or two and I wanted to wait until you were done. I think he, he might, he might have a, an explanation from his client's point of view.
Well, yes, just from a pure objective point of view, in the context of, I think there is a, I didn't realize until I just heard Randy and Bill's explanation of the SLCCI. I think it requires some further discussion, and we talked about it in closed session a little bit, but the issue is the TIF in which Randy, on his pro forma, had, and he admitted to us later that obviously those were fictional numbers and there's no basis in fact for the numbers he put in his pro forma, because he put a TIF on there. And under state law, you can't recover sales tax from taxes on hotel rooms. So, a TIF doesn't work. And so, what we, what we, what we saw there, and we talked to staff about, but is there a commitment to use the taxes, sales taxes that are generated from our project? To your point, Councilman Scrivener, not from somebody else, but the sales taxes that are going to be generated by the new hotel and by the convention center, can we capture those? That's the same concept as a TIF, but it's under state law, you have the ability to appropriate your taxes. So, we can, in our discussions with, with staff, we said we can capture those, 100% of those sales taxes to take the place of the TIF that was on the pro forma and, and not apply that beyond the convention center and the hotel. So, that amounts to, that coupled with the 1% community improvement district only on our, our hotel, Capital Plaza, and the conference center, and a transportation development district on our hotel, on the Capital Plaza, and on the conference center generates, we believe, in the $290,000 range. So, we believe we had a 30, $40,000 gap then remaining out of this $28 million project, and that's when we suggested a CID of limited boundaries. Now, those boundaries can be much smaller than that described by Bill because the district he described, I think, probably generates over $19 million in sales, which would generate $190,000 in, in a community improvement tax, just a community improvement tax of 1%. We don't need that. We're not asking for that. We did recognize in our discussions, both the staff and the council, that Randy's organization has, has been working with the Downtown Association to form a CID for downtown and to help other downtown needs, whether it be parking, landscaping, street removal, any of those things, we'd love to partner with them as well. But we understand the pragmatic aspect of forming a CID is the vote, and so we prefer to start smaller and not use anything more than we need, but we'll partner with Downtown Association, with Randy's organization, if they want to go beyond that. So, then we're talking about businesses that generate 30 or 40,000. And as we discussed, we think those require discussions with the property owners, with the business owners, with the retailers. That's why we execute a pre-development agreement first, and an actual development agreement would be conditioned upon those other incentives to give the council members who need extra assurances that they'll never be below that, that capture, because the question came to us, well, you can design it for 30,000, but what happens if you don't collect 30,000? Well, we would, could design it for 60,000, we could design it for 90,000, we could design it for 100,000. Again, it goes to the pre-development agreement, but I wanted to clarify, the, the local incentive, Councilman, was the result of the TIF not working for collection of any taxes on hotels. So, you can wipe that off all your pro formas, but it was to arrive at a solution, not just say no, but say that won't work, but this could work, and that's what we're about, is finding solutions to challenges to get you to your vision, because it's a vision of this community, we believe, given the popular vote, to have a conference center and to have that downtown. But, so, we capture 100% of the sales tax on the conference center and the hotel, our property, we capture CID on the conference center, our hotel, and the Capital Plaza, and then we make up the extra $30,000 out of a $28 million project through a vote of, of acquiring the right and identifying the property owners that will participate that are contiguous and comply with state law. We think we can do that. Not to mention, that wasn't mentioned, again, partnerships, the CDBG Fund, Community Development Block Grants are eligible for parking facilities. That would be another place to look, which is a federal grant of 500,000 up to 2 million. I work for the City of Riverside. We've probably drawn $4 million in federal funds for infrastructure. So, those, again, getting the right team together and making those applications, we can reduce those costs that Bill and Matt have talked about for building the garage and look at other partnerships and, as, with the state as well. So, I just want to clarify that as to why, so it's not, we're not, we don't have to raise $327,000 from either a CID or a TDD. Talking about just our hotel and the $30,000 gap from outside of our project. Everything else will be funded through the sales that are generated by our project.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Bob, anything else?
Well, I, I don't want to get in a tit-for-tat, but I'd, I'd ask you guys to respond to that.
Bill, do you, let me ask this. Are you prepared to give us a response tonight, or would you rather provide one at a later time?
You, I mean, I, I think you have, you've shared these numbers with us. I assume you're confident in them.
Sure. I'm very confident, yes.
Okay. And you've told us that that's what it's going to take in order to generate the kind of revenues that is being, that will be required to do this, have you not?
Right. And Mr. Bednar is exactly, I mean, he's correct in, in his explanation, where I think we've differed and we've shared that with him a number of times, is that we believe that this, this, the, the SLCCI, for lack of a better term, all of the, the TDD, the CID, and the additional sales tax on the conference center and the hotel only generates $205,000, okay? So, that's where we differ in the numbers there. Will it generate more as we go forward? Yes, I, I believe so, but I think when we look at our budget and look at what we're going to have to allocate at the very beginning, we look at year one and year two, that it's going to generate somewhere in the neighborhood of $205,000. That's, that's the number we come up with. We don't see that it's going to generate $290,000 the first year, and we honestly believe $205,000 is us being very aggressive, not us being conservative in what it will generate, so.
And Bill, if I'm not mistaken, whether it's 205 or 290, there's still a gap.
Yes.
Okay. Bob?
You know, I didn't go down through here line by line because I think, I assume the audience has a copy of this.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And, and the, the main thing that I was concerned about is the, the annual appropriation, which again is a, is a general obligation appropriation. I am concerned about the parking garage, 250 spaces, by all accounts, will not be enough, and it's not located near the downtown. So, again, I, I am, I'll, I'll just leave it at that. I, I want, I wanted people to understand where these revenues are coming from for both proposals.
Thanks, Bob. Carlos, do you still have a question, or did Bob maybe hit your question?
I just want to go back to the $327,000 and 1% increase, and I think Joe was saying that he differ in the area in which you had stated, Bill, going from, I think it was from Bolivar to Jackson, north of the river, to the highway. So, the $327,000 can be obtained in a shorter range, or no?
It's, it certainly could be, that's just the area we've looked at, and that generates about $190,000, as, as Mr. Bednar said. The difference is, is that we think there's a $122,000 gap by doing the small area. They, Joe believes there's about a 30 to 40,000 gap, so.
So, no matter how much the gap is, whether it's 30,000 or if it's 150,000?
Right.
Where would that funds come from?
You would definitely have to do a CID of some area. What size that CID would be would be something you'd have to work on as we move forward. So, you'd have to get enough businesses and look at their revenues and how much they generate in order to figure out how big you wanted that CID to be. The reason we chose Bolivar to Jackson and then from the river to the highway is it's $190,000, so it, it definitely gives you some cushion there that, to where we wouldn't have to put any pressure on the general fund going forward there, so.
But there would be.
Could we make it slightly smaller and get to $150,000? Yes.
But there would be some pressure on the general funds in year one?
If, if we didn't have a CID that was big enough approved, yes.
So, there is potential of some funds having to come out of general funds.
I would agree with that. The way I understand their proposal is the city is obligated to give them $327,000 in year one. So, if we can get the CID big enough, then yeah, and, and along with all the other things that come with that. So, it wouldn't be all 327,000 because there would certainly be the, the tax on the hotel and conference center, the TDD and the CID for, at least for the hotel and conference center, so you would have that smaller area. So, again, which we, we calculated at 205,000 the first year. So, there's going to be, if we don't get a big enough CID, there's going to be something between 200,000 and 327, that's going to be an obligation of the general fund, so.
And so, I guess it'll be more of a discussion on Monday night.
All right, two weeks. Anyone else to my left? Questions, proposals in regards to the comments that were made earlier? No one on my left, on my right? Oh, I'm sorry. Mick Ralovich.
When we had some other numbers ahead, in front of us, and this is really maybe for the Earharts, is there appeared to be a profit, whereas the pro forma offered by the consultant said this thing would lose a quarter million dollars for the first two or three years and then settle down and be about a $100,000 loss. I was trying to figure out how their operation would overcome what the consultant said in terms of a, of a yearly loss. And I'd needed clarification on that.
You want to allow Mr. Earhart to?
Yeah, the, the difference there would be, be interest. On, on Randy's proposal, he had the interest in principal associated with paying off the, the debt, all on the, the one line for, for the hotel, well, he had a hotel and conference center, but, so if you got to take the interest associated with the, the 13 or 14 million associated with building out the conference center, you take that off because you don't want to count it twice, obviously. And if you would put the interest associated with that 14 million in, yeah, there would be a loss every year associated with that conference center until that debt was, was extinguished, of course, but, but yeah, that, that's, that's really the difference of the numbers.
Okay, thanks, sir. Anything else over here? Timmy Wright, Bob?
I just want to clarify, we keep talking about CID. So, people know, a CID is 1% of the sales in the area of the CID, right? It's a 1% sales tax.
That, yes, that's what we would be proposing, yes.
Okay, so the, so if, if you're talking about the area you described, then every merchant in that area would, would impose one, an additional 1% sales tax, which would be collected and go toward retiring the, this debt or, or making a fund to, to fund this 327,000, right?
That's correct.
Excuse me, sir, you can't? Are you an attorney? For the record, just teasing.
Excuse me.
Joe, if you could, then we're going to wrap this up. Thank you.
As we explained, the, the interesting and nice thing about, and flexibility of the CID, Councilman, is you have flexibility to design the size of the district and the rate of the tax. It doesn't have to be 1%. If you want to do a quarter percent, if you wanted to combine it with an assessment, it, it has all the flexibility that responds to those people who have to vote on it, and we're, and the only people who vote on it are those that have an involvement in being taxed. So, it's not a third party imposing a tax unwillingly on somebody. They'll, they can voluntarily accept it, and we can work with the rate. That's why we discussed, it's really important to be able to sit down and have those very important educational and informative discussions with those people that we need, but again, we have to sit down with staff to make sure that we design the district the right size from the tax numbers that you have. As, as you stated, we're not the owners, we just respond to the RFP to your vision.
Right. And, but you would agree, wouldn't you, that that's an important component for people to understand?
Oh, absolutely.
That, that is something that will have to occur.
That's right.
In order for this to work.
That's right.
And so, it's not just whether we agree with Earharts that they have a great proposal, it's whether or not 50, 60, or 80 businesses agree that they want to be taxed in order to pay for this.
Right. And, and the number of businesses, I'm not sure at, tonight, but I know this, it would be a condition of any pre-development agreement. You wouldn't go through with a development agreement unless you had a CID established that would cover your concern. So, that's the bridge here that I'm talking about. The vote on the 7th doesn't have to be to, be at the altar and marry us, it's to sit down and proceed as a partnership with these other questions to make sure that we proceed in a fiscally responsible manner, all the facts are out there, and your assurances are assuaged, so that the risk, if there is any risk going forward, it's a tolerable risk for all of the parties, and we've, and, and we can be sure then that for those other potential partners out there, we can make sure that we can develop what other, other partnerships, other ideas to help with the revenues. We've talked before in session. You, you host the state capitol, they put tremendous infrastructure demands on your city every day. I'd like to be a part of helping you all strengthen that partnership from a revenue perspective with the state of Missouri. That's the real key here.
All right, Carrie?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
While we have a podium too, I guess, I know earlier there was some concern when Bill Betts mentioned that your numbers are a little different than what the city says, and so there's this discrepancy, and I think that is kind of a concern probably by several people in the council, and what I wondered is maybe after this meeting, at some point, if you and Bill would talk about some of those discrepancies, how you came to your numbers and why the city maybe doesn't agree with those, because I think that could have an influence on possibly how the council might act, so.
That'd be great.
Perhaps if you all would, I don't know what, how it would be appropriate for you all to talk to.
I think you guys can do that.
Yeah, definitely.
You've done that throughout this, and.
Great.
Bill, I want to thank you for all your work, and Randy, not only tonight, but behind the scenes as, as we've dealt with different things. Joe, thanks for your time tonight. Scott, thank you. Mr. Kingsbury, thank you and your group, the farmer group, for everything that you guys have done. This is a very passionate project, there's no doubt. This is a project that has been within our community for nearly 80 years. You don't just build something like this in, in a quick fashion over 80 years, and look forward to more public input over the next two weeks. Cindy was just telling me our next meeting on this will be on April the 7th.
Mayor Iry, move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Bray, seconded by Carlos, okay? All in favor of adjourning this evening? We have accomplished what was on our agenda the way it looks. Roll call, please.
It is roll call.
Aye.
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 Thank you very much, and drive home safe.